Thank you all for joining us tonight at the Albany City Council meeting Wednesday, June 12, 2024 at 6:00 PM. I'd like to call the meetings are ordered and would you please all join me in the pledge of allegiance? So, we are waiting for Councilor Novak, so she'll be stepping in. Do you please do a roll call, please, Allison?
Counselor McGee.
Present.
Counselor Novak. Counselor Newton.
Present.
Counselor Kupczynski.
Here.
Counselor Mau.
Here.
Counselor Smith is accused. Mayor Johnson II.
Here. Thank you very much, Allison, for the roll call. I did receive word that Councilor Novak is on the way. Traffic on the bridge, apparently. We have two special presentations to start with. I would like a special, excuse me, special presentation for Fire Chief Shane Wooton. The City Manager Peter Trottson will be presenting that.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, if you'd join me and if I could get Chief Wooton, but come on up here. Check him right there. I've got a couple of notes here. You know, we're going to have an opportunity, we're going to have an opportunity to mark Chief Wooton's retirement on the 28th of this month, June 28, along with Chief LaBelle's promotion. But tonight, as you mayor and the council honor Shane for his many years of service, I want to make sure that the public that Shane has served knows of the high regard that all of us have for him, all of us on the city staff. He's carried on a tradition of really strong leadership in the Albany Fire Department, and he has lived AFD's motto to prevent and protect from harm. He's been a mentor, a coach, and a friend. He hasn't shied away from making very difficult decisions, and he's done so with a persistent good humor through thick and thin, and that's something for which we're all very grateful. In his message to the community, it's prominently displayed on AFD's website, Shane explains that "Our commitment to you is that we will strive to maintain exceptional customer service and always be ready to respond to your needs with professionalism, compassion, and respect." He has led the way, and he's done that for 32 years. The chambers are full tonight with people who share the respect and the admiration that we have for him, and even affection that we have for him. So I wanted to say on behalf of everybody that we thank you for your leadership. We wish you well in the next chapter, and we ask that you, Mayor, present him with the key to the city so that he can always get back into the city.
I typically say a few things about people when they retire and Fire Chief, or former Fire Chief still, you've been a great mentor, also actually educating about the fire department. You've also been a great deputy city manager when called upon, and I do appreciate your intense communication, and I'm glad that we don't have to hear your long swearing-in ceremonies again. No, no, all kidding aside, I have home great respect for you and so does the councils. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And don't be a stranger.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate it. Thank you.
You can be there on June 28. That's station.
All right, thank you. Actually, may I address? No, no call point, and I promise, Mayor, it won't be, it won't be very long.
I know. Take your time.
But I, I do want to thank the members of Albany Fire Department that are here and also the other 90 that are out working. Without you, we wouldn't be the department we are. Also want to thank the ELT staff in the back. You, I look forward to those 10 o'clock meetings and us getting together and sharing ideas, learning from each other, and then also sharing just like a great laugh. Peter, you have been an amazing boss, supervisor, leader of the city. Every meeting, every time, or the more time I spend with you, the more I am impressed by your wisdom, your, the skills you have, and am very, very grateful for you giving me an opportunity five years ago to become chief of Albany Fire Department. To the mayor and council, oh, yep. To the mayor and council. So I can kind of say whatever I want a little bit here since I'm on the way out. So even though, and I'm going to speak not only to you, but to those that came before you and the different councils that I have worked, that I've noticed that even though you all look at the world through a different lens and you view solutions differently than, than each other, you don't always agree on that. With you and with previous councils, previous mayor, I've never once questioned your love for Albany and your service to the community and, and the dedication that you have to those who elected you. And, and I've always appreciated the fact, the spirited conversations and the checks and balances that our, our government relies on and how you fulfill that obligation. So thank you as somebody who's lived in Albany for 30 years for the work that you do. So I very appreciate that. And lastly, to maybe some of you in the audience who live here in town, as well as to anybody who may be watching the meeting, the community of Albany is amazing community, and without the support that the department has had and will likely continue to have from our community is amazing. We could not do the things we do and serve you the way that we want to without your support. So thank you very much to, to everyone.
Next special presentation is Rams Horn Ministries.
Ted, Ted Moreau will be speaking. We'll give them a chance to clear out. Yes. You can bring a couple over to the chair, we can bring up there with them. So Gina Moreau, Jeannie Moreau, Kebby Olson, and Leroy Stack, Slack, and Matt Borden will be also speaking. You have 10 minutes, please.
Hello, and thank you, Mayor Alex Johnson II, for inviting Rams Horn Ministries to give a city council presentation. My name is Jeannie Moreau. My husband Ted is on a business trip today, and we are incorporators of Rams Horn Ministries, a new nonprofit in Albany Incorporated, November 1, 2022. Currently, we're fundraising for housing we call Fragments Discipleship Housing to address issues of addiction and homelessness. For Rams Horn Ministries, ministry always starts with a meal. In 2014, we started feeding, listening to, praying with residents of a local drug and alcohol treatment center. 10 years later, meals continue now around our own home dining table with those in recovery who want to be discipled and become apprentices of Jesus. As they're nurtured and discover their true identities in Christ, they heal, become whole, shine brightly in their communities, and as true apprentices of Jesus, they're really good at giving things away. Opportunities to give through community service include free meal prep and delivery to the elderly, yard work, and moving projects. Here are a few statistics from the National Institute of Health. The number of individuals involved in the U.S. criminal justice system is among the highest in the developed world. Number two, nearly 4 million adults are under probation supervision. That's one in 60 adults in the USA. Three, 68% of drug offenders are rearrested within three years of release from prison. RHM believes that drug use and crime are not government problems so much as they are church problems. Our solution will work and indeed is working.
Mayor and councilman, good evening. My name is Kebby Olson. I've been with the Rams Horn Organization for about two years now. Jeannie and Ted are my backyard neighbors, and that's how we began to know one another, and I learned about their organization. So the way I am contributing to this is, part of their ministry is what they call Bread of Life, and that is, we prepare a meal, we deliver a meal, we try to make these meals wholesome once a week. We deliver to the elderly, and some of the elderly are devoted caregivers to their ailing spouses. Some of the people are just homebound, and this gives them one night a week of respite of what to have for dinner. I've learned a lot with Jeannie, and we continue to do this. Even today, I, I've learned, I've met some of these people that they are helping, and even today I was encountered with one of them in the neighborhood, and he was mowing one of the neighbor's yard, and we were visiting, and all of a sudden, he got a phone call, and it was a, a man that, this is what he said, "Has just been out two days," and this man needed help, and immediately, he left and went to help this man. So this is the domino effect that is so nice to see in this organization. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name's Leroy Slack. I'd like to give you a short testimony about my life and how I got hooked up with Rams Horn's ministry. I was a heavy drinker in, in my 40s, and my brothers gave me an ultimatum on either get sober or we're going to buy you out of your business. So I went to Dalton Teen Challenge and got the help I need, got sober, and then I was hoping to have a ministry to help other men and women that burned their bridges with their family and friends where they couldn't get the help they needed. So I prayed about it, and years later, I ran into Ted and Jeannie and started to get to know them, and now I am involved in discipling and mentoring with them on people that come out of Dalton Teen Challenge, and it's a, a privilege to be able to help people that are, have no place to go because they burned their bridges, so their, their families don't care anymore about them. So we do, and we want to see them succeed in life. And Jeremiah 29:11 states, "I know the plans for you, declares the Lord, plans for welfare and not calamity, to give you a future and a hope," and that's what Rams Horn Ministry means to me, a future and a hope. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name's Matt Borg. I'm a farmer here in Albany, and I've been involved with Ted and Jeannie's Rams Horn Ministry for almost 10 years. I'm involved in that ministry partly for selfish reasons because I am blessed by the genuine honesty of people who, through recovery, have discovered while it's harder to tell the truth, telling the truth sets you free. Rams Horn is an environment where we get to know each other through doing life together, sharing meals, and doing community service to build the trust enough that we can tell the truth, and then by not keeping secrets, that keeps people from going back into addiction. I have seen, in my time with Rams Horn Ministries, I have seen several marriages restored. I've made a lot of friends and seen many people lifted up on their way out of recovery to become productive citizens. But more than productive citizens, more than just productive citizens, there are citizens that have a strong heart to reach the homeless and addicted. Many of them go on to full-time work, helping others recover one at a time. If you want to lift people out of homelessness and addiction in our community, it's done one person at a time through getting to know them and by ministering to them individually. I have a difficult time relating to or even approaching people in that condition, but I can lift up and support people who can. You have no idea what an asset to our community a person is who's successfully gone through recovery, how, how, how much of an asset they can be. But coming out of recovery, they need support. They need a place to land, and a community that will lift them up is incredibly difficult for a person coming out of recovery to reintegrate into society due to cost and social stigma and due to the fact that many, many cases, they have, most of their bridges are burned. Although through this ministry, I've seen many families restored with spouses and children. If they don't have the resources to lift them out, lift them up to the next stage, they risk falling back to their old life, and we miss out on the incredible impact they can have on our community because they can reach people that no one else can. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation this evening. It was a pleasure to meet you guys back then, but we're happy to have you here. Next on tonight's agenda is public hearings. The Public Works and Community Development Fee Adjustments, Directions to how to testify or submit written materials were published on the council agenda. I declare the public hearing open at 6:15 PM. Does the staff have a report?
No, Mr. Mayor, you have heard the reports on all of these adjustments, and all of the department heads who have adjustments and resolutions here are available for any of the council's questions.
Anybody registered to speak? Yes, we have one person that's currently registered to speak. I will now hear on those registered to speak. Mr. Matthew Fitchard? Fitchard? Fitchard. Fitchard, sorry.
Matthew Fitchard, 1140 10th Avenue Southwest in Albany. I registered as against the raise in SDC fees. I'm not 100% sure that I'm against it, but I just want to make sure that everyone understands some of the ramifications of these. And it is stated that the revenue is down in the building department, and I'm assuming in the SDC fund as well, as maybe projects have not come to fruition as a result of the rise in costs and interest rates. In one of the testimonies, they mentioned the rise in costs of materials, labor directly affect the number of projects that come across the desk of community building, community development, and thus their revenue is down. Just know that this 3.07% increase in SDCs is, on the average home that they use within the documentation they gave you, is about a $644 difference. If the rise in this or other market conditions keep one home in Albany from being built, it would take, sorry, it equates to $644. Over $21,000 is what you'd bring in. So you would have to make up 32 houses if one house is not built as a result, a result of increase in costs. Does that make sense? If there were to be 35 houses built in Albany, and you bring in one less as a result of the costs associated with building 32 homes, I should say, it's a break even on whether you raise the costs or not. So there are impacts on the private sector and development and the amount of housing in this town based on these decisions and other market conditions that are not under your control. So they are real things. I am curious if revenue is down because there's less projects, is there less work? Can efficiencies be looked at? That's one of the first things we have to do in the private sector. This is not pertinent to SDCs, but I think if it incurs, occurs in other departments, it potentially occurs in Community Development Department. But I believe it was 618 Madison Street. It's kind of right next to the Albany Stove Store kitty corner from the Pops parking lot. The city, I think, has mowed a portion of that lot twice this summer already, and the second time I saw it, I stopped and I asked, and I said, "Hey, do you guys, do you guys own this lot? Is that why you're mowing it?" "Well, I don't know." And I said, "Well, I actually looked it up. You don't own it, but are you guys assessing liens to this property owner, or are you guys just mowing this property on behalf of this owner at a cost to the citizens?" So I would, I would encourage you to think about all these impacts of your decisions, and it's a heavy burden to sit on that council, and I don't do that. So I applaud you for that. But these decisions definitely affect development, and if we have less development, then revenue will change as a result of that as well, which is already the cause of needing to increase these along with inflation. And I understand that it costs money to, to run this city, and for the most part, I think this city is run quite well.
Thank you for that. Thank you. We will be, we'll respond during our time. I now call on those, does anyone in the audience who did not register wish to speak? Yes. So a public hearing, sir, you can just, if you want to speak, you can go ahead and speak. Are you Brad Dennis, right?
Right.
Perfect.
There on time, and then I realized I had my notes on my printer at home, so.
Not even worried about it.
And you know, traffic in North Albany, I finally had to cut across Hickory Street and kind of zig and zag.
Also to clarify that during the public hearings, there's no time.
Okay. So I'm Brad Dennis. I live in North Albany, and I'm here to talk about system development charges tonight. As we know, development, especially middle housing development, uses up infrastructure capacity, and sooner or later, infrastructure has to be increased. The city has a website devoted to SDCs. I'm sure you've seen it, and on this page is some important words, especially for the public, and it says that "New growth in a community is to pay for its share of infrastructure costs rather than existing taxpayers or utility rate payers." And it goes on to say, "The idea behind SDCs is that longtime residents have paid their way through property taxes, utility rates, and other means for the systems that are already in place. If those systems need to be expanded to accommodate growth, it is not paid for at the expense of the existing population." So this is the city's website. So my neighbors in North Albany agree with me in the city of, uh, website in that growth should pay for its own way for increased capacity that's needed. And in my opinion, the SDC rates need to be increased more than just an inflationary amount of, say, 3.07%. They need to be brought up to the maximum amount that's, that's allowed so that it truly is paying for the increased capacity that's going to be needed by this development. I have an idea that's probably too late for this year, but perhaps for next year it can be considered, and that is that, that there be a second tier of rates for system development charges. There's one rate for standard residential households, and there's a different rate for middle housing units that presumably would be a higher rate because at the rate at which they consume capacity, that, that they truly need to be paying their own way. For, for the roads, we should not accept a level of service, a degraded level of service and say, "Well, that's okay." I, I think there's grades A, B, C, D, and we should be asking for at least a grade B and not allow new development to degrade our, our roads down to unacceptable levels of service. And so I have a, a couple of questions, and, and that is, and again, I live in North Albany, but I think the same thing is probably true in East Albany and South Albany, is that these funds are being collected, and are they being spent in the areas in which they are collected or they are collected or are they just going into a single fund? I come from the background of governmental fund accounting and so to me, it's very easy to set up funds to designate monies for certain projects. And so I would encourage, and I've looked on the city website at the financial statements, although I cannot find a financial report for June of '22 or June of '23, the last two years, financial statements don't seem to be there. I was trying to find out the balances in the system development charges and whether they were separated out between water and transportation and sewer and et cetera. So a couple of questions, and that is, has the staff, I know that the staff typically makes recommendations to the council to approve things. And I don't know if the staff has ever recommended increasing the SDCs, you know, to a maximum level so that growth will pay its own way. And then lastly, I know there's been talk, I mean, for years about there needs to be another way through Albany across the river as in another bridge. And I don't know if the council has ever considered adopting an SDC for a new bridge. You know, there's a lot of traffic heading for I-5 and they're all funneled through downtown. So anyhow, that's just my thoughts is that a 3% increase for inflation is not adequate to keep existing citizens from ending up paying for the growth that the city agrees on their website should be paid for by development, should pay for its own way. So thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Shaun, would it be appropriate to have staff respond to that?
It would, they should respond to it at the end of the public testimony. And then also on public hearings, we do normally have a three-minute time limit on speakers as well. And on everything, yeah.
Thank you. For a reminder, I declared the public hearing closed at 6:26 PM. Yes. Oh, there's more people? Well, nobody hadn't said anything. Okay. Is it with regard to the SDCs? Business Run Public is after this.
Okay.
Okay. You know, I told him, I informed him at the beginning of the meeting. So I declared the public hearing close at 6:26. Council discussion?
I have a question. On page 44, regarding the building permit encroachment, it states on 44, too many tabs open. For the budget impact, revenue received as a result of proposed fee adjustments will help recover staff costs. And then it goes on to say, "It's currently being absorbed by engineering services budget and supported by transfers from transportation, sewer, stormwater, and water funds, similar to non-project and non-revenue generating work activities in the engineering work group." That doesn't really tell me what the, what is the, so if we're not taking money from those accounts, what are we doing with that increased revenue in those accounts? Are we dipping into reserves for that or what is the impact to those accounts now that we won't be stealing from those accounts, stealing, taking from those accounts? It just was vague and I didn't know, what are we doing with that extra money?
Sorry about that. Erin Heen, Shrup Public Works. So currently we have the deficit from staff time versus what comes in from permits. And so staff time comes out of our engineering services budget and utility rate users are the primary source of income to that budget. So fees collected from permits would go back into that engineering services budget to offset costs.
So potentially in the future, costs will not have to be raised as much if we are going to be recovering those costs through SDCs? Is that the thinking?
That's, the hopes is that that would play into when we take a look at costs or utility rate increases, that we look at overall budget.
Now we're not using the SDC stuff. Now, now we're getting SDC money for this stuff. Okay. Or building permit money, excuse me.
Yeah, so there's the, yeah, so you have the two for the building permit review fee and the update to encroachment permits. They both have the same impact to the engineering services.
Director Bailey?
I just want to clarify that SDCs do not pay for operating or personnel costs at all.
Yes.
So.
This is about the permit fee. So that was my, my bad, I said SDCs.
Okay.
This is about the permit. So that extra revenue from the permits won't be pulled from all these other accounts anymore. So in the future, we maybe won't have to raise costs as much because we are getting this now, we're recovering our costs for permitting now.
Yeah. Another way of explaining it is currently engineering services that are sort of general engineering services, like what Erin's describing, are being subsidized by rate payers. So they charge back to the funds they work across, all of the funds, the water funds and the street fund. And if we're recovering an appropriate amount through the encroachment permit and the other things that Erin has requested, then rate payers would not be subsidizing that work, which they currently are. We're not recovering hardly at all through those fees.
Fantastic. Thank you. That answered my question.
Counselor Novak?
Thank you. It wasn't in regard to that. I'm clear on what you just explained and I thank you for it. My question is with regard to SDCs and something Mr. Dennis said earlier. And I'm wondering if it's possible to raise the SDC rate beyond the inflationary adjustment in order that growth should indeed pay for itself?
I can, I can, I can address that and then some of the things that Mr. Dennis questioned and asked about. So we, well, a couple of things. Right now, we do not charge the maximum allowable SDCs. We charge, we charge less than that and it varies by whatever the SDC fund is. I could quote those numbers, but they're just numbers. So at this point, so, so we are not charging the maximum allowable with exception of water. The water SDC, we do charge the maximum allowable. The other SDCs, we charge less than the maximum. So there is room to increase SDCs to help, you know, so growth will pay for itself. The other point that Mr. Dennis brought up was a kind of a second tier for middle housing. And that, from my point of view, I think it's problematic on a couple of levels. One is that it kind of goes direct contradictory to what we did a couple of years ago where we, where we did a kind of sliding scale or a tiered system for SDCs. So smaller houses paid less of an SDC fee and larger houses paid more. And all that was based upon impact of the home size. Smaller homes have, you know, in general have a less of an impact. City infrastructure, therefore, they pay a little bit less of an SDC than larger homes.
That's true unless you're considering transportation. Smaller home, 80 of them, for instance, just as an example, is a heck of a lot more cars on the road. Even if the houses are smaller, you've got more, you've got more cars on the road. Maybe transportation SDC could compensate because regardless of the size of a home, if you have more vehicles, you have more trips, I think that needs to be taken into consideration.
And that's, you know, I appreciate the observation, but we did take a look at that and we found that in actuality, smaller homes do have, on average, do have less, they're creating less of an impact. There are less trips per smaller home. And that's kind of based on research and market data that we've, you know, reviewed and took a look at.
So Counselor Novak, I'm sure you remember a couple of years ago, a year and a half ago, the council asked us to look at SDCs overall, all of our SDC methodology and try to adjust it for, to encourage development of smaller housing. If y'all hopefully remember that we wanted to try to make it more equitable for smaller sized housing to be built because of the housing shortage across all housing types in Albany, but in particular, smaller houses. So that's what we did and we came back with that methodology and we looked at all of them. Streets in particular was, the council adopted a new rate system that had three tiers based on square footage of the structure. And we do have data that's in the methodology that supports creating a smaller tier for smaller homes because data does show that in multifamily homes and smaller homes, they do tend to have fewer vehicles and create fewer trips. And so that was supported in that methodology. So I understand your point, 20 single-family houses versus 80 multifamily houses, just the sheer volume of houses. However, they're still going to be assessed, their SDC, based on the type of development that they create. So it won't be that a small structure pays the same as a larger structure, but more structures will pay multiples of the appropriate rate for that SDC, if that makes sense.
I can appreciate that. There was a second question that popped into my head and it seems to have floated away. I'm sure it'll come back as soon as someone else asks something. And if it does, I appreciate opportunity to ask it then because it just fell out of my head.
Just to address, I want to address one more thing.
Forgive me, I'm sorry. I hope I don't take your thought away. This is what it is. It's, again, I'm going to refer to a very recent example, the development of the 80, the proposed development, the whatever development, approved development of 80 townhomes. I would say location has to figure in because those people, you know, I live in North Albany. I'm very near that area and there's no way to get into town without, I mean, you could ride a bike, but I wouldn't even say we have suitable bike lanes. So if you're going to do, for future reference and even in this consideration, I would say you have to take transportation and location into account. There's no way to get down the hill, you can't walk it and get to work. I've seen people ride scooters, I've seen skateboarders. But in general, even if each townhome only had one car, that's still 80 cars instead of 160. So say there's 80. You can't get from way up high on Gibson Hill to anywhere, to a store. There are no stores. I mean, foreseeably in the distant future, there may be, but just realistically speaking with what we have in terms of development in that area right now, no grocery store, you have to go all the way down the hill to the North Albany Market. Medical facility, all the way down the hill. There is nothing up there. So if you're saying, and I understand, less vehicles because smaller home, okay, fine. One per housing structure instead of the usual two or three or four when there are teenagers. You still have to take into account, I hope, the fact that there are no services and we do not have a bus system in that area. I understand why it was cut. It made sense to cut it, but it doesn't make sense to me that there won't be vehicles in spite of the smaller, I mean, given your point that there won't be two cars probably to a townhome, although to me, that baffles me because roommates aren't necessarily, I'm thinking college kids, you know, they're going to need their own sets of wheels. And even if they're bicycles, that's dangerous right now. That's, that's, there's, there's cars, high speeds, lots and lots of vehicles, people walking, people pushing little ones in strollers. Forgive me for going off on this, but I just think it's a very big deal and it's something that in terms of development, you have to consider location. There's nothing out there. There's no way to get groceries without going one way or another down the hill. That's all I'm trying to say. It just, realistically, if you're going to do 80 of something, put them where we have services. Put them where we have transportation. I don't understand how this even went through without adequate transportation infrastructure. But anyway, thank you for hearing me out. That was, that was the thought that fell out.
Any other counselor have comments?
I just wanted to address something, Mr. Dennis, a question he asked about SDCs. And we do, SDCs are specific to each utility. So they're all tracked in their own budgetary program. So water has SDCI, SDCR, same with sewer, transportation, et cetera. So those are all tracked separately and, or you can see those through our budget documents.
He did mention there was some budget documents that were missing. Is that the case, Peter?
Yeah, that's correct. Those, for those years, won't be posted until the audit's complete, but that information is available either from Chris Bailey or from Gina Jaeger in Finance.
That satisfactory, sir? Thank you. Hey, will the counselor like to make, would you, more discussion, counsel? Would the counsel like to make a motion?
I move to adopt all resolutions presented in this public hearing.
I second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is a public hearing guide, I'm sorry. Legislative ADC amendments, DC dash 03 dash 24. Liz Olmstead will be presenting pages 68 to 165 in your packet. That's a lot of pages. So do I, excuse me, Allison, do we need to open another public hearing? One for each of these? Okay, thank you. All right, now, let me go back to my script. Next on tonight's agenda is a public hearing on ADC amendments. Oh, this is ordinances. These are ordinances, correct? Yeah, we have two ordinances. Next on tonight's agenda is a legislative public hearing regarding amendments to Albany's Development Code as specified in the planning file DC dash 03 dash 24. The applicant is the City of Albany's Community Development Department. I call to order this legislative public hearing at 6:41 PM. If you wish to testify, there are two options available, which should be described in the council agenda and the notice materials. At this time, I call for a reading of the meeting procedures by Comprehensive Planning Manager Anne Catlin.
For those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal to the county's Board of Appeals. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standards and review criteria in the Conference Plan and Development Code, which you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the City Council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond.
At this time, I call on the staff report from Project Planner Liz Olmstead.
Good evening. Tonight, we're here to talk about planning file DC 0324, which includes minor clarifications, corrections, and revisions to the Albany Development Code.
So a bulk of the amendments are related to updates that we need to do to comply with state law. There were a lot of changes to housing law to allow housing, affordable housing, single-room occupancy developments in the last legislative session and also still even going back to the prior one. The state also made some changes to bicycle parking requirements for apartments and then the building code has added some rigorous standards. So these are in a bunch of different articles and if, when we get to questions, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
We're also making some other clarification updates and revisions to the code. These include revisions to parking and bicycle standards, covered refuse containers, updating the tree felling definition, clarifying types of organizations for community services and updating land use review thresholds and also updating language for clarity and consistency with the rest of the code. So, criteria one, proposed amendments are consistent with the applicable comprehensive plans, statewide planning goals and policies. So, goal one, citizen involvement. There was a public hearing with the Planning Commission. We did receive some public comments at that hearing. We incorporated suggestions that were sent to us from Laura LaRocque and Scott Letman attended the hearing and raised concerns about the refuse container proposal at the meeting. Goal two, land use planning. Amendments clarify, correct, and revise sections of the code to ensure the ADC meets community needs. And goal 10, housing. Amendments will comply with new state law, create additional housing choices. So, criteria two, the proposed amendments are consistent with the applicable development code and based on purpose statements. At the Planning Commission public hearing, they recommended City Council approve the text amendments for DC O324.
Any questions?
Councilor, have any questions?
So, on page 140, you will know, you noted that the city will be modifying block length standard citywide to comply with climate-friendly and equitable communities, block length standards in the future. Why did we, since we were revising that section anyway, why did we choose to wait on that?
That's a really good question. So, the block length standards are going to be a little bit different and affect different areas throughout the city. And right now, the block length standards are really just for residential subdivisions and we've had different interpretations of how you determine the average block length and it's just gotten so confusing and even amongst staff and then people submitting applications that we thought, one way to address that for now, I mean, it's going to be a while, is just to add a maximum block length. So that, I mean, we still have an average, but then in no instance, unless there's natural features, et cetera, could a block length exceed 800 feet?
Okay, so I, I think I hear you saying is, you wanted to address a media problem, but the, the other, the other changes are pretty extensive, so you wanted to wait and make sure you did all of those together.
Yeah, it's not unique just to this section. I mean, we'll revisit it again and see if we can further clarify, but it is a clarifying, we couldn't figure out a better way to clarify even with pictures and drawing new pictures and we just thought, you know, one way to address this difference in interpretation of that was just to add that maximum block length. So we kind of captured it under a clarifying edit even though it, it's a little different. But I'm glad you read the notes and saw that.
Also, I just want a comment. I want to express appreciation for the language clarity in there. There were several instances that I saw that were a lot more clear. So thank you for going through the document and, and clearing up some of that unclear language. So, thank you.
And the council, Councilor Newton?
So I understand that the amendments aim to clarify sections of the code related to housing and to create additionally, would create additional housing kind of choices. So, I'm curious though about the specifics of how those changes would be implemented if you have, we could just, for looking 10 years down the road, how maybe this would impact current property owners as well as like future developments?
Well, most of the changes are related to allowing housing in more situations on commercial and then sometimes industrial land, also public lands and land where religious uses are allowed. Where currently, we don't always allow residential uses in commercial zones, so it's opening up the flexibility for especially affordable housing in other areas besides your standard residential mixed-use zones. Those are the major changes and it's a little complicating because there's so many different things. There's parameters around all of those and performance measures regarding affordability for the ones that relate to affordability and ownership, so. But, I mean, the state has determined that we need more affordable housing, we know that we need more affordable housing and sometimes we don't have enough land or not enough land without wetlands or whatever the issue is and we want to encourage more mixed use and residential uses in areas that are close to services anyway. So, this is starting on some of the changes we'll be making with our climate-friendly areas, which will be a little bit more broad, but these changes really are to comply with state law, which is mostly in ORS 197A, if you want to look those up.
Fantastic, thank you so much, I appreciate that additional clarification.
Any other councilors?
Yes.
Councilor Novak?
Thank you. I'm glad you mentioned the properties zoned for religious assembly, because that caught my eye. And I'm wondering, I'm sure there are some areas where the, the religious assemblies would be perfectly happy to have extremely low-income housing on their property. I'm wondering, for any place of religious assembly that's not so keen on that, will they have any choice in the matter?
Well, they, this isn't going to mean they have to do affordable housing. If they choose, if the property owner wants to do affordable housing, they now have more tools in the toolbox.
Thank you. So it is, there is some degree of, they're not going to be told, you must, because this is zoned this way, you must. Thank you, I wanted clarification and I appreciate that. I have a couple other things that I came across that I would appreciate clarification on. And it's on page 76, one paragraph, this isn't a change that you're making, but I, I read this, been looking at the changes and I hadn't ever noticed it before. It says, "The establishment, construction, alteration, or maintenance of a public facility authorized by the Director of Public Works, including streets, highways, traffic control devices, drainage ways, sanitary and storm sewers, pump stations, water lines, electrical power or gas distribution lines, or telephone or television cable systems. This includes construction of staging areas of less than six months duration, but does not include major substations, treatment facilities, storage tanks, reservoirs, towers." I just was a little bit struck by that because, now, Chris Bailey, I love you, there you are. Yes, I love you, it just seems like an awful lot of power in the hands of an elected official. And I'm going to trust that it's, it's going to be okay and you're, you're never going to exercise this power in ways that the people don't expect. You're just going to, it would only be in Public Works. I don't even know if, if I'm making my question clearly. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Do you want me to try to answer?
Yes, thank you.
So, this is in a section that identifies activities and actions that do not require a land use application or a land use review process. So a lot of our regular maintenance of city facilities, if we're not expanding them or growing them, I mean, the streets and all that, we don't require a land use application for that. Now, of course, these are just city facilities and city projects or staging for the bridge. You know, a lot of these staging things are temporary, the maintenance happens, it's temporary. It isn't changing the use of the land, so it doesn't require a land use application. Now, there's a lot of red in this section and we were really trying to distinguish between what doesn't require land use review and some duplication in another section where we specify what requires land use review and then it, it looks like there's a lot of change, but very little is happening. But it, that is in a section where, yes, Public Works does have a lot of discretion to, we don't want to stall some of their projects. Now, if they were adding on to their sewer treatment facility, a new building or something like that, then that would require land use review, but the kinds of activities listed here are not necessarily those expansion-type activities. And I don't know if that answered your anticipated question.
That helps me tremendously, I appreciate that, thank you. I have another item, it's number 12. I, I just, again, I want clarification here. It says, "In middle housing," again, page 76, "in middle housing zoning districts, new middle housing, including middle housing created through internal conversation of..."
Oh, you're right.
Should be conversion.
Should be conversion, that's a spelling error, but...
I am so glad to know that, because I was thinking, internal conversation?
I thought we caught that, I thought we fixed that, so that'll get fixed and we can correct typos, so we will have...
I appreciate that, please, please make that correction. Thank you so much.
Good conversation.
Yeah.
Okay, are you good, councilors? Go ahead, please.
I just want to make sure we clarify that Director Bailey is not able to just go out and do all these projects. She still gets approval through the council, so there's still oversight over our city processes, so the public doesn't think that Chris is out there just spending the taxpayers' money willy-nilly. We, we still review that, so, just want to clarify that.
Thank you.
I'm great.
Thank you very much. I thank you for the work on this. We will now be taking a public testimony. If anyone wishes to enter or exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe it and then present it to the city clerk. I will now call on those registered to speak first, followed by those who did not register, refer to public hearings sheet.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Forgive me, it's over here, Novak. There was one more item that I just now saw in my notes, may I ask?
Yes, you can.
Thank you, and I don't necessarily need, but maybe I do. This is 5D, page CP dash 3, in regard to ordinance 5968. It says, "Maintain a development pattern compatible with the surrounding area as determined by the Comprehensive Plan Designation." And I don't remember where page 5D or CP dash 3 is, but, so if we're, we're, this is something that we are doing that's in our code. We're going to maintain a development pattern compatible with the surrounding area as determined by the Comprehensive Plan Designation. That makes sense to me that we would do this. And again, it's just in light of, of recent focus on, for instance, the 80 townhomes. And I'm wondering, how does that, does, does that development fit in with this, what it says here, "A pattern compatible with the surrounding area as determined by the Comprehensive Plan Designation", because I, I'm not sure it does.
I'm sorry, is your question about a development code change? And if so, I'm just trying to get what page it's on.
Yes, it's page, what I wrote down is CP dash 3. It's number 5D on page CP dash 3, in regard to ordinance 5968. So I'm, I'm questioning that.
It's not in our council packet.
It's not?
Can you just, I would be happy to help answer that question after, but I don't have that in front of me, so I'm not...
Okay, my apologies, my apologies. I did ask earlier today for the ordinance and I guess that was off the ordinance and not in the packet. I apologize. I will, I will reach out to you personally about that because I...
Be happy to, anytime.
It's a concern, thank you.
Okay, so we have one person registered to speak, Laura LaRocque. And I don't need your address given, representing Scott Letman. And she's currently neutral.
Thank you and good evening. As the mayor suggested, my name is Laura LaRocque with UDL Engineering, representing Scott Letman. I only have about three comments on this particular amendment. The first one is in response to the first review criteria. I just wanted to point out to City Council and perhaps to maybe staff that's listening tonight that there could be a different way to present these code amendments. So this is a pretty comprehensive packet, although it's really focused in its review. The entire packet was not available to the public until seven days before the public hearing. For those that you do not have a knowledge of the land use process, the state does require amendment packets to be submitted at least 35 days prior to the first public hearing. So I would suspect that these amendments were available and could have been posted to staff prior to that seven-week deadline. So it could have gave folks a little bit more time to review it. I will back that up to say that staff has definitely fulfilled their noticing requirements and fulfilled all their duties, but it would be appreciated just to have more time, especially when multiple articles are being presented with amendments, just so that we have time to review them. On that note, there was a lot of amendments that occurred between the Planning Commission review and City Council. So even though there, the packet of amendments was posted seven days before the Planning Commission meeting, additional amendments were still not presented and available to the public until seven days before this meeting. So it's a really short turnaround time for all of us that are working on other things and looking forward to reviewing development code packets to, to have an opportunity to comment. The two comments I have on this amendment are pretty minor in nature. The first one, staff is recommending removing the word conceptual before section 2.490. This is in reference to, the existing code requires a conceptual landscape plan to be submitted with a site plan review. Conceptual in nature is showing that there are certain sort of trees, vegetation, where they're going to be on in the site and how they fulfill the code that it geared the landscaping requirements that there are in place. By removing the word conceptual, that's indicating that a final plan would be required at the site plan review stage. And that's pretty premature. There's a lot of changes that take place between a planning level application and the actual dismissal of a engineered construction plan and it would just essentially be a waste of time and money on these particular items because you'd be developing something that would ultimately change before building permit review anyhow. And the stated purpose for it is that it wouldn't hold up an issuance of a building permit. And I'll just point out that a complete landscaping plan at the time of building permit would still not hold up a building permit. So, that, looks like I ran out of time, so I'll conclude my comments on that particular amendment.
Thank you.
Any questions from the council?
Makes sense.
So, the, they removed conceptual, so can staff respond to that? And bear with me, please.
Do you want to stay seated?
Yes.
I think Anne Catlin is going to respond.
Yes, she is, go ahead and step back and then I'll have you come up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Liz is gonna, Liz is going to respond to that question about it and, and why we included in this packet and...
Yeah, so part of the reason we wanted to remove conceptual is, it's, it's not in the case of Laura LaRocque when she submits applications, but there are other people that submit applications that don't lay out how much landscaping will be provided to meet our code. So we can't review it at the time of land use application to make sure it's going to work later in the process. So, by doing that, we wanted more information in the landscape plans so we could make sure that when we get to building permit, that they're going to have enough landscaping.
Counselor? I just have one thing. So, so conceptual is what they're providing when they do the land use permit, correct? So are you saying that maybe we'll give more direction to what conceptual means instead of removing it completely? Because I know when I do something for work, I propose something, I put, this is the concept, this is what my thoughts are, then I get feedback from the insurance companies I'm working with. So removing the word conceptual seems a bit final to me?
I think that was Ms. LaRocque's point and it made sense what she was saying. I, does it, does it, you, you say that if you leave the word conceptual in, then you have people who are presenting things without a conceptual landscaping component?
Yeah, or they show just general landscaping on the plan, just, and it doesn't provide, what we need to do is we need to make sure there's enough trees on the site, there's enough bushes on the site to meet our code requirements. So sometimes we're not getting that information at land use application. So we're trying to just make sure we get the information upfront. If it does change later slightly, that's fine, but we wanted to get more information upfront instead of waiting before building permit issuance to get that information holding up the process.
We need to determine that the plan is going to comply with the city standards for landscaping and what we're getting is not adequate to determine that. And so, I mean, we can condition that it complies with the city standards, but it's usually, that landscaping could result in a change to their plan and to have that happen later at the building permit stage when they're ready to get going causes delays if they have to go back and replan and modify the parking lot landscaping or whatever it is. So, we're not trying to ask for too much in the beginning, but are, we're just not getting the specificity that we need in the earlier stage with the land use application.
May I ask a follow-up question? So, if someone presents an application and right now the language says conceptual, landscaping, whatever, forgive me because I have no idea, but, so, it has... forgive me, because I have no idea, but, so it has the word conceptual, and that to me means, give us your concept with regard to the landscaping. Landscaping to me means trees and bushes and whatever, lawn, green stuff. If a given applicant is not providing you proper information and you can tell from the application, do you not then say to the applicant, based on that application that's before you, we're not getting enough of a concept from what you've provided us here? Wouldn't you, wouldn't you head that off right then?
We do try to do that in the completeness review. And then, I mean, they can decide whether or not they want to turn something in and have us review the application with what they've submitted. So it isn't always that easy. I mean, if you guys want to keep the word in, it's fine. It's just, we look bad when we hold things up at the end, yet it isn't necessarily our fault because we didn't get adequate information until it's at a stage that, you know, people are ready to go, so.
Counselor, no, my bond again?
I actually think it's fine to remove conceptual. I think it's a little more clear. It sounds like, just from the conversation that's happening, it's conceptual is subjective, and plan just sounds a lot more clear. I need your plan. Plans do change, that's fine. It doesn't sound final to me. It sounds like a plan to potentially be final. So I am fine with the conceptual being removed.
I was going to say you're just looking for more specificity is what you said, right? So yeah, I can have it be removed as well.
But can we add that language, be more specific in your...
Well, they're going to just submit a landscape plan. If the plan needs to change, then it changes throughout the process, so.
We do review landscaping again at building permit. So if things do change, we can look at it again to make sure that it meets the code.
And, you know, and I, I mean, if they don't comply, then that's on them, their project's being held up.
If you added the words according to the Albany City Code or whatever, because they know what, what they need to comply with, right? They need to comply with what's on our books regarding landscaping, if I'm understanding this clearly.
That's essentially what it says now. I mean, we can work on modifying this a little bit more if you want in the next round of code amendments. If it, if it becomes an issue, we can spend more time on it. We kicked it around and thought the easiest thing to do right now is to take out the word conceptual and that, you know, I mean, it might require, I mean, you heard what Laura said, but I think that, you know, as long as they're telling us number of trees and, and sort of some of the details, it's less work that they have to spend later. Things don't change drastically if, if we've had a good pre-app. But, you know, sometimes things do change, so.
Thank you. Counselor?
I, I think I have a, maybe it's tangential to this, this particular point of the conversation. But I'm concerned about Ms. LaRocque's concern about the timing of the information being available to the general public to get their arms around all of this. Do we need to step back and take another time, take a break to get that information out in advance for everybody to take a look at?
So very, we incorporated some of Laura's suggestions, and those were the only changes that were made that she provided us since the planning commission hearing, which was a month ago. And so the packets, essentially this package of amendments has been available for 35-plus days. We had a draft of it earlier when we sent it to the state, the Department of Land Conservation and Development. A draft was available, but we usually just publish the planning commission packet a week before their meeting. So their hearing was the 15th, no, the 13th. It was May 13th, so the packet was available a week before May 13th, so...
It has been publicly available.
Yeah, it's been publicly available. The planning commission packet, yes, the packet did change, but only to incorporate suggestions by Ms. LaRocque. So it's not like there were any other substantive changes. So it's essentially the same with her. She had some good, she knows some really good things, and we wanted to incorporate those into the packet. So we didn't add new elements or comments or anything like that, so.
Thank you. Counselor McGee? Good? All right. Thank you so much for, for coming up. Does any member of the audience wish to speak about the proposed amendments? Please raise your hand, and if you're attending in person or virtually, be called, to be called upon. If you're attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so you can be called upon. Please provide your name, address, and sign, and on the sign-in sheet, if the person or email, email it to the city provided email address. Anybody in house? Thank you. Does any staff member wish to respond to any of the testimony presented? We've just done that. Does the council have any questions for staff regarding the conversation so far? Thank you. I declare the public hearing closed at 7:09 PM. Counselor would like to discuss further?
Just procedural, procedural. If we want to have it read, et cetera, et cetera, like we normally do, we would have to phrase it such that it would incorporate Counselor Novak's finding of that missing or...
Missing word.
The missing word, so we have to phrase it that way.
Ask the city attorney?
You're going to be making a motion to approve the, the ordinance tonight. So we can, you can do that with the, somebody can make that motion to approve the ordinance with the, the language change.
The change.
The typo, yeah.
Of the wording, so it doesn't say internal conversation.
Now, and I'm going to read the ordinance as it's written when, when you ask me to. I'm not going to put that in there, but somebody will make their motion after that, after we do that.
All right, thank you. Counsel, there's an ordinance for your consideration on page 70 of the council packet. There is a recommended motion for your consideration on page 69. Would the city attorney please read the motion, the ordinance and title only?
An ordinance admitting ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany Development Code by amending the Albany Development Code and adopting findings.
Would the council like to make a motion to read this ordinance a second time and title only?
Move. Go ahead.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Is there, I got that.
I'll read it again.
Yep. City attorney, please read the ordinance a second time and title only.
An ordinance admitting ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany Development Code by amending the Albany Development Code and adopting findings.
Would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I move, we adopt the ordinance with the typo corrected.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. A legislative decision of the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice or intent to appeal not later than 21 days after the decision becomes final. Within five working days following the adoption of the amendment, new, new land use regulation, the director shall forward the Department of Land Use and Observation, Conservation and Development a copy of the adopted ordinances and findings. We're going back to the agenda now. I need to take a five-minute break or 10-minute break. Coffee all day.
I'll now reconvene immediately at 7:22 PM. Next on tonight's agenda is a legislative public hearing regarding amendments to Albany Development Code as specified in the Planning File DC dash zero two dash twenty four. The applicant is, applicant is the City of Albany's Community Development Department. I call to order this legislative public session, public hearing at seven twenty two. If you wish to testify, there are two options available, which are described in the council agenda and notice materials. At this time, I call for a reading of the meeting procedures by current planning supervisor, David Martino.
Good evening. For those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal to the land use board of appeals. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standards and review criteria in the Conference of Plan and Development Code, which you believe to apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond.
At this time, I call for a staff report by project planner Jennifer Sapello.
Looks like we're having an issue with another participant that's sharing the screen.
That's not me. Try it now, please. There we go.
Thank you.
Going to do a slideshow?
Yep, sorry, just give it a moment. Okay, so I'm Jennifer Sapello, I'm a planner here at the City of Albany, and this is for Planning File DC O two twenty four. So Albany has two rivers and numerous creeks, each of which contain a potential flood hazard for the community. The City of Albany has been in the NFIP community since nineteen eighty five and a CRS community since nineteen eighty, nineteen ninety one. The participation in the CRS program provides the community with higher regulations for development with the floodplain in order to mitigate flood hazards and risks.
Excuse me, could you, what is CRS?
A community rating system, sorry. As a result, a discount on flood insurance is available to all Albany citizens. The amendments are the Albany Development Code Article Six, which contains the city's floodplain ordinance. In a recent audit, the Department of Land Conservation and Development found the city's floodplain ordinance does not meet the state's minimum floodplain standards. The proposed amendments will update the city's floodplain ordinance to align with the Oregon Model Floodplain Ordinance, which has been adopted by FEMA to meet and in some cases exceed the National Flood Insurance Program's minimums requirements for development in the regulated floodplain. Additional amendments that were not part of the Oregon Model Code included some clarifying language, as noted in the staff report, such as, sorry, the removal of, or allowing allowance of fences in the floodway and restricting development in the floodway structures as defined, which is in the definition that was newly added, as well as some erosion control measures that were updated in the Albany Municipal Code. The ADC criteria and findings are as criteria one, the proposed amendments are consistent with applicable comprehensive plan and statewide planning goals and policies, such as goal one is citizen involvement, goal two, the land use planning, and goal three, the flood hazard, or goal seven, sorry, flood hazard and hillsides. Criteria two is the proposed amendments are consistent with the applicable development code and based on purpose statements, and the purpose of the floodplain overlay district standards in the ADC are to manage development in the floodplain in a way that promotes public and environmental health and safety and minimize the economic loss and social disruption caused by impending flood events. The process and timeline for this type of review is a type four legislative review where the planning commission had a first evidential hearing and makes a recommendation of the city council, and the city council is the final decision maker. Public notice of the public hearing was advertised within the legal section of the Democrat Herald on April twenty seventh of twenty twenty four, notice was posted to the city's website and to DLCD, if his, and physically mailed Tibetan County, Lynn County, and the Mid-Wilamette Council of Governments on April twenty ninth of twenty four. The planning commission held a meeting on May thirteenth of twenty twenty four, and the conclusion of the public hearing was that the planning commission recommended to the city council to approve the proposed amendments. The effective date would be thirty days following the approval of the ordinance. Any questions?
Counselors, do you have any questions? Counselor Newton?
One, one second, grab my notes. All right, so I understand the amendments, this floodplain ordinance, they're intended to comply with FEMA-approved Oregon Model Flood Hazard Ordinance. I was curious, this could impact property owners in flood-prone areas, potentially increasing their insurance requirements and restricting some development options. I wanted to know if you guys looked into that, if you had any additional information in regards to that.
I do not have any additional information on insurance rates. That is kind of outside of the realm of this ordinance. It does change some requirements for property owners, such as a third elevation certificate when they're building. Used to be, we just had one, two, a pre and a post, and now there's a mid, and that is actual, that's actually a national floodplain standard that we were just out of compliance. So it does change some of it, but it is a required change at this time.
Okay, and then I was curious if it would be possible, I'm not sure if there's an addendum we can add in, just for, because in the document, it really, I was Googling all the fun technical terms, you know, like CLOMR, OLMR, BFE, which I thought was totally something different. And they might not be easily understood by the general public, and I'm wondering if, you know, we can add a glossary or, you know, just to make sure that these are a little more accessible and can include some comprehension for folks who might be reading it.
Yeah, so in the existing Article Six, under six point zero seven five is definitions. And in there, there's some existing, there was quite a few additional new definitions added to that, and it does include all the ones you mentioned, BFE for base flood elevation, CLOMRs, LOMRs, LOMRFs, MAP amendments, and additional terminology that's in there.
Perfect, thanks.
But if there is something that comes up, we usually add it.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other counsel have any questions or comments? I'd like to thank you for your work on this. We will now take public testimony. If anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe it and then present it to the city clerk. I will now call upon those who registered to speak first, followed by those who did not. Oh, two. First is up is Laura LaRocque, Ms. LaRocque. Thank you.
Good evening, Laura LaRocque with Udell Engineering, representing Scott Letman this evening. So entered into the record is a written overview of my presentation today, as long with, along with some exhibits. There are three main points I'd like to make tonight. The first one, true to the purpose of today's amendment for the floodplain ordinance, I feel that there are two provisions that need to be addressed in the amendment package. The first one, as listed in Item One, says amendments of sections six point oh eight oh, six point one zero seven, and six point one one zero. Currently, it states that anything greater than four lots or four acre, whichever is less, needs to provide base flood elevations. Included in the memo just simply states that the state's federal model ordinance, along with the federal regulations, actually have a different standard that's quite a bit different than the city's. So in the federal, in the Code of Federal Regulations, so where this actually comes from, it says that greater than fifty lots or five acres, whichever is lesser, should be the standard or the bar is where when base flood elevations data needs to be provided. So you're probably asking, why is this important? Well, in, in the first case, it's asking for some sort of expert to come out and establish where base flood elevation is, is not already existing anytime you're developing a piece of property. Currently, the city's standard is a difference of, so it's a lesser, there's actually, the city requires four, four lots when the state and the federal requirement requires forty six, and an additional acre of square footage. So it's a considerable difference of when the standard is imposed. It's quite a bit more restrictive at the local level than at the federal level. This comes at a cost, additional cost for staff to review these, a different cost for applicants and property owners to obtain the data. And additionally, this provision was established with the original development code back in nineteen eighty eight. Numerous code amendments have been conducted since then to streamline review processes, and this could be an opportunity to complete that purpose and further streamline review process. And perhaps the most important is that going to the federal standard will still meet the purpose of the development code purpose statement, because they have other ways of obtaining the data, including a test of reasonableness that relies on historic data, high watermark items that can be more readily available at a lower cost. The second point I wanted to make was just an amendment that clarifies two code sections. In the current code, it says that no development means that the area has been excluded from a land division as a set aside. So this term, no development, how it's described in the Albany Development Code differs from the federal code regulations, which states that any man-made change. So currently, the city requires any land division that has even a tiny portion of a floodplain on there to have a floodplain permit review, even if development is not occurring in that area. So I'm proposing amendment to change no development to match what is stated in federal regulation, just meaning no man-made change. There's two exhibits. Figure one shows that a four lot subdivision can be created. You can see the lower portion has floodplain on it, but there's adequate area outside of that that could be built on that wouldn't really necessitate a review for floodplain ordinances. Where figure two, two of the lots don't have a buildable area, and that would be more reasonable application of the standard requiring a floodplain and development review.
Thank you.
Yes, so I know I'm over time. The last section is just Amendment Three, talks about some minor changes to the development code, and there's only one just section that refers to something that has a stated cost figure in the development code, just pointing out that that cost figure, that numeric amount, has not been adjusted to MASH inflation. So where it stated ten thousand dollars when it was established, it's now twenty thousand dollars by today's standards, and that may be a consideration for further amendments.
Thank you.
That, I'll conclude. Is there any questions that you have?
Not at this time. We have a section, then we have to do that.
Okay, thanks.
Up next is Scott Letman, Mr. Letman. You ate up a minute of your time, by the way.
Just messing with you. Okay.
Just messing with you.
My name is Scott Letman, one hundred Ferry Street. I have two properties that are affected by this ordinance. One is a forty acre piece across from the Mennonite home in South Albany, fourteen acres of which I got a letter of map amendment fulfill. I filled it, it's in the county. I went through quite a lengthy process to do that at considerable expense, and your Geary Street, south end is, that's the fill that's in there when they rebuilt Ferry Street, excuse me, Geary Street. Under, the property I want to develop in this, on this property is outside the floodplain. It's elevated, but these rules require me to have a application where I have to have some kind of analysis associated with any land use application to develop. The other property I have is in North Albany, and it's adjacent to the North Albany Middle School. It's approximately eight acres. I have active fill permit, fill permit on that, but you fill it as it's convenient for people to bring fill in, and we have to make sure there's adequate fill, and that site has a considerable amount of North Albany Road in it. That site is, we don't have it completely graded to the, it may be above, it may be below, but we haven't done an analysis to get it out of the floodplain with a letter of map amendment fulfill, but it's active fill permit, and we could probably do that right now. These, what I've observed this evening, and the council spends quite a bit of time at, is evaluating contentiousness regarding land use, and the middle housing is a result of that, where they're trying to introduce more housing. And, and these two parcels, I wouldn't want anything to threaten any, it isn't necessarily middle housing, but any kind of housing, because this area is adversely affected by unaffordable housing. And, and so if there's not, if the reasonableness test for this rule is associated with the standards for state and federal guidelines, the question I have is, why is the city's greater than that? Thank you.
Thank you. Does any member of the audience wish to speak about this proposed amendments? Please raise your hand if you are attending in person or virtually to be called upon, or if you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so you can be called upon. Please provide your name and address on the sign, on the sign up sheet, or email it to the address provided in the packet. Anyone in the House like to speak? Thank you. Does any member, staff member wish to respond to any testimony presented?
Good evening. So in, to some of the testimony that was given, just briefly looking at it, one of the, the first item that came up that talks about greater than four lots or four acres or whichever is lesser compared to the fifty lots or fifty acres, this is already existing in the Albany Development Code. It is one of our higher regulations that gives us credits toward our CRS program. It is in Article six point eight zero, which talks about four lots or four acres. These higher standards that we have and try to ma, are trying to maintain through this amendment, provides, again, the citizens of Albany a discount on their insurance. So right now, we are at a CRS rating five, which provides a significant discount on insurance. If we remove certain higher regulations, we drop points, which causes to drop class level, which increases flood insurance for everyone in the City of Albany, whether you are in the floodplain or not, anyone who chooses to have or is required to have flood insurance. I have not had a chance to look these over yet, and so I believe we would like to request a continuance at this time to look over this large packet and try to work out some of the differences that we may have had with Letman. I do want to say that some of the required, most of them are not things that I'm able to change language-wise. There were some comments about redundancy of definitions in different portions. Those per guidance from DLCD, if you, if we are wanting to change that, it'll extend our timeline, and we're trying to get this approved so that we, we have our CRS rating on July thirtieth. So that's kind of that process there.
So it sounds like a continuance will be what you're asking for?
Yes, at this time.
So, so attorney, what, what are my steps now?
As long as, if the council's agreeable to that, then we can bring this back at a, at a future meeting, they'll have to readvertise it again, and we'll, we can do that.
Counselor, are you comfortable with that?
Are, do we, what is our confidence level that we'll be able to get that done by our deadline? That you'll be able to come back and?
I, I just had a quick question for the attorney. If we continue it to a date and time certain?
If you continue it to a date and time certain, tonight, we do not have to readvertise it.
Okay.
So.
So we have a council meeting coming up on June twenty sixth, that's two weeks from tonight?
Yep.
Will that get you inside a window?
Yep.
I think that, that could work.
Counselor, are you comfortable extending it till, continuing to then?
Yes.
Yeah, I would like us to make that deadline, so, please, thank you.
Sounds great.
Thank you, we're going to continue, thank you, Ms. LaRocque and Scott Letman for your testimony. So, so we're going to the next agenda item. Next on tonight's agenda is business from the public. He didn't tell me his name. Okay. Oh, he said he called me, okay. Oh, that's him right there, the first one. First person to sign up to speak has left the building, and so next is Zach Draper. You have three minutes, sir.
Good evening, Zach Draper, owner of the New Food Pod going in at three two five Airport Road.
And I'm Ryan Keasy, I'm one of the business partners.
We are just here to discuss some of the current code on tent permitting and, and seeing if, how we could potentially address some of these issues. Ryan, go ahead.
So we erected a tent to provide shelter from rain in the winter and the sun in the summer. There is a six-month deadline for tents. Because of the size of the tent, we also had to get a fire permit. So the permit was paid, everything was inspected, the tent was approved. Unfortunately, our, our six- Unfortunately, our, our six months is up, and the intent was possibly to build a permanent structure, but, you know, time and budget didn't allow for that, so the idea was that we would fundamentally alter the footprint of the current tent, effectively making it a, a tent distinct from the original one, and that, that suggestion was denied. So at, at this point, we're looking to see if the city would be amenable to any kind of update or revision to the code that would allow the permanent structures, or, excuse me, temporary structures, maybe especially tents, to be left up for longer periods than the prescribed six months. It, to us, it creates a seemingly arbitrary burden as business owners that tents are not prohibited per se, and the time limit does seem a little bit arbitrary. And if, if the tent was completely dismantled and moved 10 feet in a different direction and re-erected, would that be considered a new tent? If a new tent was purchased that was similar and erected in the same spot, would that be considered a different tent? We understand the, the need for regulations for safety and, and not creating eyesores, but it, again, it just seems arbitrary to have to take a tent and then presumably re-erect it, the exact same tent in the exact same spot six months later, and presumably you could do this indefinitely.
With re-permitting?
With re-permitting. So the, the suggestion would be, could there be an option to keep tents erected, provided that they are regularly inspected, examined by the fire marshal again, any permitting fees are, are paid, they're kept in good condition, et cetera? I don't know if this has been raised before, and if it hasn't, if there's any considerations that the council might suggest as far as what would be included in a proposal of this kind.
Thank you. So during this time, it's not a back and forth, so this will be brought back by some or all of us during the business from the council portion, but thank you for your testimony.
Good evening. Lisa Grotto, Executive Director, Albany Downtown Association, with a quick downtown update. Just wanted to bring your attention to a few things in this month's newsletter. Delighted to headline that the Greyhound Tavern is completed and has met the requirements for the Main Street grant. So that's exciting from our end, because that's one of three grants, $200,000 each. So that was completed from the aspects that they submitted to Main Street within 10 months. So we're excited about that. Also highlighted on here is the sixth annual Pride Event, Albany Pride, set for Saturday, June 22nd. Also, that day is the kickoff for the Albany Visitor Association Summer Passport Program. Kids love running around downtown with, and throughout the city, with parents in tow to learn about new places. The kickoff will be both at their booth at Albany Pride and at their office that morning. Also, Craft Brew SmackDown is coming back. This is a, kind of a bear crawl, similar to a wine crawl. This is actually the 10th year, but it's been a little off again, on again. The Downtown Association has adopted the event and is now collaborating with Greater Albany Rotary Club. In a greater sense, we're taking the lead while they're still supporting the event, providing a lot of day of activity. So that's on first Friday, August 2nd, so we're looking forward to that. A couple other things to highlight. We have Albany Carnegie Library is doing Sticky Bear Storytime, so that's a read along, and that should be exciting on June 15th. And also, Father's Day is coming up on June 16th, so if anybody hasn't remembered, Sunday, please come shopping, take dad to dinner, grandpa, whoever you have in your life. River Rhythms and Summer Sounds are highlighted prominently here, and we're very excited to have the park open for those events. And also, just wanted to highlight our volunteer spotlight on Julie Jackson. If you don't know, Julie was the executive director from 2000 to 2007. She brought things to us like the hanging baskets, movies by moonlight, the downtown twice around Christmas parade. She also started the EID and moved the downtown offices from an upstairs location to downstairs where we had more recognition. So literally, without Julie, who now serves as our secretary and co-chair of the Promotion Committee, things would not be the way they are downtown, so. Also, a quick shout out to Russ Tripp. He provided a substantial donation, and you'll see that there were 10 more baskets hung today. Flower baskets.
Thank you, Director. Anyone in chambers like to speak during business from the public? Oh, it was? Oh, I'm sorry. I am so sorry, I didn't see what's, it was typed in.
Well, I have Brad Dennis, North Albany. I have just something interesting to talk about, and I've heard, I've given some handouts to the clerk with a couple of graphs on the back, but we've heard the term several times tonight about affordable housing. And I get to thinking about, well, what makes housing affordable, or what makes it unaffordable? And is there anything that the city can do to make housing affordable, or are there factors really outside of their control? And I just want to make the point that I believe there's two things that make housing unaffordable. One is mortgage rates, and the other is construction costs. And mortgage rates are driven by the US bond market. 30-year bonds are typically tied to the 10-year treasury note, and so the interest rates have gone up quite dramatically over the last three or four years, which is what the first graph shows on the page. As a result, if a person needed to borrow $300,000 for 30 years, and compared to, say, four years ago to today, they would have to earn an additional $33,000 per year in salary. That's how important mortgage rates are on housing being affordable. And there's not much the city can do to make these more affordable, other than perhaps work with our national leaders to figure out, well, what causes interest rates to go up, and the way the government, federal government spends has a big amount to do with that. And then the second thing, construction costs are especially driven by energy costs. Takes fuel to get trees to the, to the mills. So the second graph on, on the back page there shows what has happened to the price of oil, say, over the last eight years. And in January of 2021, the cost of oil was about $55 a barrel. Today, it's $78 a barrel. That's a 42% increase. And again, the cost of oil is driven by US policies related to supply and production of oil. And again, there's not much the city can do to lower it. So I, I see in the strategic plan on page 20 for the city, it does talk about, you know, having to deal with the implementation of House Bill 2001, which is middle housing, and it talks about dealing with population growth, a housing shortage, particularly affordable housing.
Thank you.
So, again, I say there's not much that, really, that the city can do to impact affordability.
Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is award of contract, unarmed security guard, Gina Director Jaeger, page 203 to 205 in your packet.
Good evening. Tonight, staff is asking council to approve the award of a contract to Valley Merchant Police for unarmed guard and patrol services. Their current contract with us expires at the end of June, and so we took this opportunity to go out for an RFP and, and make it really comprehensive and really look at what all the needs of the different departments were here at the city. So we pulled in the different departments and asked them what services they needed. We sent out an RFP in March. We received our responses in April, and there was a selection committee that sat down and looked at all of them, and based on price, based on the quality of the services, all of those different things, they determined that Valley Merchant was the winner of the RFP and should be awarded that contract. We have a resolution that just awards that contract to Valley Merchant and also allows the finance director to sign that contract. I am open to any questions.
So can you tell us who else bid for that?
It is included in the memo. We had Safe Rock Security, we had Providers International, we had Security Services Northwest Inc., and Dark Buffalo Group.
Interesting. Counselor, do you have anything else?
Currently, the expenses for unarmed security guards are spread across all the different departments. So will any of those ratios change, or what, what are those ratios, or do we know, or?
It really depends on what the services are for. For example, the parks locking public restrooms, they will pay for that. The City Hall security guard gets allocated out to all of the departments here in City Hall. And Public Works, they have, they're asking for patrol for certain areas, so they'll pay for those. So depending on what the services are for, which department they're for, that department will pay for those services.
So it's currently in our budget to be able to support this fee that's going to be charged to us?
Correct. I mean, we had budgeted for security services. There are a few additional services, but the departments have the funds to pay for those.
Counsel, Counselor Luden?
So the contract is $200,000 for the year, correct?
Correct.
Do you know, is this multiple security guards that are unarmed, that are able to help at all, at one point in time, or, just trying to understand where, where, where the services are going?
So we have the security guard who's here at City Hall during business hours. We also have them here for meetings, like tonight, or then for other special events. So for example, if there's a joint meeting with Lynn County, they would be here at the building if it's open to the public. We pretty much have one or two guards who, who cover that time. We have other patrols that go out to the various areas, so it's not the same person who's doing everything. It is different people who are working the different, the different jobs.
Why don't we work with Albany Police? Like, why don't we just budget for a specific position there? Why are we outsourcing?
It would be more expensive to work, to have the police department provide those services. Most of them are armed, and we don't need armed services. All of our, the services that we're contracting for are unarmed.
Okay. How much would it cost? Like, because I'm just thinking $200,000 for one year. I'm just trying to understand if it's one or two people, is it like 40 hours a week, or?
Well, here at City Hall, it's 40 plus hours a week that we have a security guard here, generally, because we have council meetings twice a month, and work sessions twice a month. I'm not sure how long the other patrols take, but they do, I'm, I'm assuming they take at least a few hours a night for them to, to make the rounds. I don't know what the going rate is for a, an, a police officer, but again, I think that it's going to be more than the $200,000 for two positions, for example, or three positions.
Okay.
Counsel, anything else? Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt the resolution on page 205.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you, your motion's passed.
Thank you.
Our next on tonight's agenda is approval of an agreement. ODOT Cooperative Improvement Agreement for North Albany Road paving, Chris Sirkluski, 205 to 225 in your packet, 206 to 225.
Yeah. Good evening. Staff is recommending that council approve an Oregon Department of Transportation Cooperative Improvement Agreement to fund Americans with Disabilities Act and street improvements within the ODOT right of way on North Albany Road at Highway 20 as part of ST 2403 North Albany Road overlay, Highway 20 to railroad tracks. During the design of this project, staff identified that curb ramps and traffic signal pedestrian push buttons on the north side of Highway 20 within ODOT right of way did not meet current standards of the ADA. The overlay of the road adjacent to those curb ramps would trigger them to be improved under the Americans with Disabilities Act. Staff contacted ODOT to see if state funds were available to contribute to these improvements, since they were in the ODOT right of way, and they were willing to fund that. And per the agreement that's attached to the memo, ODOT is providing $100,000 to use toward the construction of those accessibility improvements for curb ramps and, and the traffic signal push buttons. So.
Counsel, any questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we approve the Cooperative Improvement Agreement to fund the Americans with Disabilities Act and street improvements within ODOT's right of way on North Albany Road.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Thank you, counselors. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, make, Director, I can only happy that ADA is moving along. Next is adoption of a consent calendar.
I move we adopt a consent calendar and accept and send a letter, thanks to Gary Barnes for Airport Advisory Commission service.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Before we vote, I've known Gary for probably 15 years, and he's a gentle giant, but when he's on the football field, he's a beast. And I was the first person to eject him the first time I played referee one of his games. He's a great guy, and I'm really glad that he serves the city of Albany the way he does in his capacity. So we have motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Next is on tonight's agenda is business from the council. I will start with Counselor Novak.
All right. Thank you. I do have a couple things this evening. I received a phone call from a constituent this afternoon regarding, he said it was homeless camping and garbage in the parking lot at Coles and Winco. He said he spoke to some of the staff at Coles, and they said there was nothing they could do. I don't know if there's anything anyone could do, but I wanted to bring this to the attention of the city in hopes that maybe there's something someone can do. Another thing is, I don't, it, it may be too soon to ask this, but I'm hoping I can get clarification now regarding what those two gentlemen said when they sat down. Gentlemen, I did not hear your words. I don't know, you said, I mean, the initial words. I don't know.
Tent, yes.
Yeah, I heard tent over and over again, but it was, you said it was for business purposes, and I didn't know what the business is and where the tent is located. So those are things that I would like to know, and if I need to wait, I can do that.
I believe it was Charlie's on I-5, 325 Airport Road.
Charlie's?
On I-5.
And that's a restaurant? I'm sorry, I totally missed that.
It's a food truck court.
A food truck court?
Yeah.
Okay. And so the business that you were referring to is a proposed food truck or a food truck that already exists, currently? Okay. And the tent, you're living in the tent? While you, I'm sorry, I have no idea.
This is not a discussion.
Okay, I, okay, I just totally missed the beginning part.
So what you can do is direct, what you can do is direct staff to bring back more information.
Okay, I would love, thank you, sir. I would appreciate it if staff could bring back more information, because my apologies, I just completely did not hear, although I did catch tent many, many times. So my final thing is with regard to other constituents calling about the approach of the Fourth of July, obviously, there are issues with illegal fireworks and mortars in particular. I know that we've discussed a ban before. I'm not asking for a ban, because everyone didn't want that, or some, most didn't want that. that, but I want to bring to your attention once again because tis the season. Fireworks have been entirely banned in Portland, Eugene, and Bend. It wouldn't break my heart to ban them here. I mean, I don't know if there's a way to allow the little family things that people do with their family on their driveway or in the cul-de-sac or whatever. I'm fine with that. But if, what I would like to see happen is that we announce the maximum fine of $2,500. That's the max the state allows. I'd like to put a fine on the books such that anyone who's caught setting off illegal fireworks, mortars, any of those things would receive this fine. And I think it's, it doesn't make sense to me that we don't have something written and I don't think it's unenforceable either. The chief of police has said that if you give a call and you have the address, they'll send someone. I just, I know too many veterans who are traumatized. I know, I've heard of constituents saying their cat, their dog, their whatever. I'm not a veteran, but I have always been completely traumatized by loud, unexpected noises. And I expect noises on the Fourth of July. I do not expect them on the third and the second and the fifth and the sixth. So I would really appreciate if we could put something in writing regarding, since we're not going to ban fireworks, if we could limit what kind of fireworks, you know, the legal ones that you have in your driveway or whatever. And if we could somehow say these things are permissible on Independence Day, not the day after, not the day before, not the week before, not the week after. And if we could say there will be the maximal fine that the state allows and it will be enforced. I wager that if one or two people were fined, we would see a huge drop-off in explosions that again are really negatively impacting an awful lot of people. You like loud noises, there's lots of places you can go where they're, you know, having a celebration and blowing things up. I would like to move to direct staff to bring back an ordinance that would impose that fine and set those limits for days that you can blow things up, limiting it to the actual Fourth of July only.
Do we currently have an ordinance in place, Peter?
No, but illegal fireworks, the ones that you're referring to are already illegal. So an ordinance wouldn't change that. No, the ones you're talking about, the explosions are illegal.
I understand that, sir, but we have nothing on the books. I'd like there to be something on the books that says.
It is on the books.
We have something in our ordinance?
No, it's, no, it's illegal. If you're talking about a separate ordinance for a fine, that is a different issue.
That's what I'm talking about, a fine.
But they are already illegal.
I understand. I understand, apologies. I understand that illegal fireworks are illegal. I fully understand that. I also believe that we do not have any sort of information saying that if you do this and you're caught doing this, that you will be fined. And I would like that information in writing in our code or wherever we put it, such that people will understand that if they do this thing, especially if they're doing it on a day that is not the Fourth of July, they will receive that fine. We can have people, I'm sure neighbors with video cameras who are unhappy about being awakened at 3:00 in the morning by a mortar or whatever, or who lose their apartment because someone set off legal fireworks and it caused a fire. I know people who lost their apartment a few years ago. Newly refurbished and rehabbed housing that disappeared because someone shot off illegal fireworks and they burned the place down. So I would once again move, and I don't know if I need a second, but I would move to direct.
I'll just ask staff to bring back something.
Thank you. Please, staff, please bring back.
So let me, before we, when Peter, I think, may have said it's on the books, it is on the books. It's not an ordinance, it's a state statute.
Okay.
The state statutes are the books and it's illegal to have mortar fireworks on the Fifth of July, the Fourth of July, the third, second, any day of the year. They're illegal and they can be fined up to, like you said, the $2,500. The type of fireworks that are, the small ones, there is a very minimum fine for those if they were set off and there's an ordinance on the books, which we don't have that here. But we don't, there's a lot of laws that are on the books, so to speak, and statute that are not in our ordinances. I mean, like murder is on the books in the statutes, but we don't have an ordinance in Albany banning murder, but it's still on the books. And so that's what Peter was saying, it's illegal, it's there. I mean, it's, if somebody gets caught, they can't say, well, we didn't know because it's a state statute.
Okay.
I mean, we could do an ordinance if we want, but then you're challenging the police of which one they should cite under the statute or the ordinance at that point.
Well, I would just like to see the police enforce.
Right, and that would be, and that would be something we'd have to get them to, you know, maybe Chief Harden or somebody to come in and talk about whether they, because I think she came in last time and said, well, if you called, we have the resources to do it, but on the Fourth of July, they'll have 1,000 calls out that night.
She had said that if you provide the address, that they would send someone.
That's the address where it's actively currently happening now.
Yes.
And that requires the police to get there and witness it happening.
Well.
So that's, that is, yes, of course they can respond if there's an address, but if it's all, when they get there, it's, nothing comes of it.
Right. Okay.
This just doesn't seem right.
Counselor Montague, I'm gonna go ahead and move on. Counselor Montague?
First off, I would like to apologize to the city for dropping the ball. We did not address Pride Month in our last meeting and request to have the pride flag flown. So we are halfway through the month and I will go ahead and move to fly the pride flag in City Hall window for the month of June until this council repeals this motion. So to be clear, I am moving that we fly it every year until this council repeals this motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would, if I may.
Please.
I would point out that there are certainly many very worthy and noble causes and many of them are associated with flags. But the mission of the city of Albany is, has long been, is now and has long been to provide quality public services to the Albany community, the entire Albany community. And to the extent that we have focused on our mission, we've been very successful at doing that. Displaying specialty flags or commemorative flags is not consistent with that mission and doesn't help us to be better at it. By definition, a specialty flag or a commemorative flag of any type represents only a portion of the community and has the potential to be decisive and to distract from a focus on our mission and the many challenges that our local government faces. And furthermore, it opens the council to many other requests to display a wide variety of different specialty flags and commemorative flags. So you, as I candidly advised you last year, I'd just make a recommendation. You can override that recommendation, but you, and you now have a policy which governs and gives you the option. Nevertheless, my recommendation remains to not display specialty flags and to remain focused on providing quality public services. And again, candidly, you can easily override that recommendation.
Action, active motion on the floor?
Can I do my job?
Yeah.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no.
No.
Thank you, motion fails. No, three to two. So we have to bring it back. No, so we, two, one, two, three, three to two.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Could we do a roll call?
Please.
I do need to list the names of those who voted no by law.
Please, Counselor Novak?
No. Yes. Sorry, I'm a little behind you. Okay. Who just said?
That was you.
Montague, okay.
Counselor Newton?
Let me guess.
Counselor Kopczynski?
No.
Counselor McGee?
Three to two.
It's three to two in favor.
Does it require four votes?
It does.
We'll have to bring it back when Marilyn gets back.
It can, I mean, I would recommend another motion be made when Marilyn is back. It won't automatically come back at that point because there was a motion tonight and it failed. So if Counselor Montague or anyone else wants to bring that motion back when we have all six people here, then just make the motion again and then we can vote on it.
Yeah, I would like to bring that back.
So we have a motion, do we have a second to bring it back next meeting?
I have a question. Is Counselor Montague able to amend her motion instead of being in perpetuity, having it just for this current month?
I would be willing to amend it if that changes the votes.
We would need to have a second motion second with your amendment.
You made the initial motion to change it.
Okay.
To the next meeting, so we need to get rid of that one, correct?
It already failed.
It already failed, okay. Now, go ahead.
I move that we fly the pride flag for the month of June 2024.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no.
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 Roll call vote, please.
Counsel G. Counsel Novak?
No.
Counselor Newton?
Yes.
Counselor Kopczynski?
No.
Counselor Montague?
Yes.
The vote is three to two.
Motion fails. Okay, we'll bring it back next week, I guess.
So with the rest of my time, I do want to, you know, in the spirit of what Peter said, we do fly flags to celebrate a subset of our citizenry, to celebrate and honor those. For instance, we have the POW MIA flag that is flying. That is a subset of our citizenry that's honoring and celebrating those folks. I understand that is a state law and that we have to have that. I do not need that pointed out, but it's an example of honoring portions of our citizenry. It's really disappointing that we cannot be more welcoming as Pride is a month that celebrates a big portion of our, and people celebrate this. So I'm just, I will have to end it with, I am disappointed that we've chosen not to do this and yeah, I think that is all I have for today.
Counselor Newton?
I have two things. One is a point of information. I was curious if our bus drivers carry Narcan on their buses.
Good question.
Why I'm asking is because there was a death on a bus in Corvallis. There was no Narcan available and the people that were left trying to resuscitate this individual who did expire, passed away, were two teenagers. And my heart just goes out to them. And I'm curious if, if you're interacting with the public, if you're, you know, working with them and wondering if they have Narcan on board.
Director Roten?
Counsel, we are in the process of going through division by division and providing training to staff. Our police department is helping us facilitate that and we're using our opioid settlement dollars to purchase Narcan to have available. So I don't think that's quite happened yet, but it's in the works. It will happen.
Is it possible? I have already spoken with a friend who works with a rehab clinic and they said that they'd be willing to provide us Narcan for free.
I will happily take their contact information.
Absolutely.
Our police department's been sourcing it through a contact that they have and I know they get it at a discounted rate because they buy it in bulk, which is sad but true. But yes, I'll grab that from you after the meeting.
I will absolutely get you the information. My second item that I wanted to bring up, I had mentioned, I believe, about a month ago, about the opportunity for diversion for the red light tickets, how currently the only opportunity to, you know, have diversion, which would, you know, for Class 1 traffic violations, just to be clear, is only if you're under the age of 25 and you've never used it before. I would like to move that we don't set an age restriction on this so it could help, you know, the example I gave, my neighbor who got his first ticket in his golden years. The cost is quite a hindrance, he's on a fixed income. To have this, if it's your first traffic infraction, have the opportunity to have diversion. And that lowers it. It doesn't impact the city's budget much at all. If you don't remember the handout I passed out, the state of Oregon sold the ticket for a Class 1 traffic violation, the total cost of the ticket is $265. The state of Oregon, so of that $265, receives $50. The county receives 16. Redflex, who is our service provider for red light cameras, receives $60. The city of Albany receives 139. And then with diversion, the cost of that is $125. And it also keeps, once you've completed and the school has verified, because the school will actually be able to verify if it's your first, if, yeah, attendance, if it's been your first infraction, that's $125. So in that instance, the state of Oregon gets $0, the county gets $0, Redflex, who is the red light traffic camera provider, they get $0. The city receives $75 and U-turn 180, which is the diversion training program, you know, for folks taking class, they get $50. So I think that this is a way to, especially since we're rolling out quite a few new red traffic cameras, we might have some folks where it's their first time ever, you know, making a turn on red accidentally, not stopping fully. I think it is something that should be done, so I'd like to make that motion.
Mr. Mayor, can I, the last time that that motion was made or Counselor Newton was going to make it, I promised you I would take it to a court stakeholders' meeting.
Yes.
And report back to you all. And we did have that meeting about two weeks ago, at which Captain Drum was in attendance, the judge was there, our city attorney, court staff. And what became apparent is that there's a wide variety of practices around the state. Most courts do recognize that age is a factor and provide diversion based on an age threshold, but some are as low as 18 and some are much higher than that. Opening the window, increasing the age would increase the workload and so it does have a budgetary impact in the sense that it's a load, a workload on staff. I don't know how much that would be because it's impossible to say how many more of these diversions there would be. But in the end, the judge expressed her, you know, willingness to flex according to the council's wishes, but I would, I would just put forth that the court in the American judicial system is independent. There's a legislative and an executive system and a judicial system. And the judge should have the discretion to set that age where she thinks it's appropriately set. You have hired her based on her judgment, no pun intended, and that discretion is something that's important, that independence is something, an important thing for a judge to have.
Something I wanted to mention as well, so the judge we hired, she is hired for 10 hours a week for her workload currently. So let's just say out of the estimated 20,000 additional red light ticket cameras, 2% of those tickets want to challenge them. That's a much heavier workload and we need to take that also into consideration because if we're able to have folks divert and then end up doing the diversion, that would actually take the workload off. I believe I did speak with City Attorney Sean Kidd also about some of that impacts or changes and workload. I'm not sure if he wanted to elaborate as well.
I think, yeah, what Peter said, and I was in that meeting, that the judge said that they weren't sure that it could possibly increase the staff's workload if we did change the age because then they would have to verify whether, yeah, I'll be honest with you, I'm not quite sure I got, I understood the reasoning, but there was some reasoning there and I'm sure it was well-founded. On the other hand, yeah, if 2%, as you bring up, of 20,000 people challenge, or 20,000 tickets challenge this and want a trial, that's 400 trials a year. Now, they're officer-only trials, but that, the judge still has to be here for those trials. And that will definitely put an increased workload on staff for the court staff as well. One thing that I think Peter may have brought up at the last meeting, I don't remember, but I know that the council had asked about was the average age of the person getting a ticket. And we did find out that that was, I think, the average age in Albany at the camera that we have on Queen and Gary is 42 years old. If the person who gets tickets, the average is 42, that helps some, so. is 42 years old. Of the person who gets tickets, the average is 42. That helps some, so.
Thank you for elaborating on that. Sorry, yeah, so I would like to make a motion to remove the age limit for the diversion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
What else? Thank you. Anything else, Counselor?
Nope.
Next, Counselor Kopczynski.
On a lighter note, I think it's going to be on Saturday, the 22nd. We're going to be unveiling a new animal at the Carousel, Grizzly Berry. And it's, Grizzly Berry and Kiger the Mustang are already out in the foyer entry into the Carousel room, if you want to see them in their glory. And the unveilings are always a huge whoop-de-doo every time we do one, because the sponsors always get the first official ride. And there'll be cake and all sorts of goodies and T-shirts and a whole bunch of fun all day long for the unveiling day. So come on down, and it'll be on our website and Facebook and Instagram and all that sort of good stuff. So that's it for tonight.
Counselor McGee.
I have two, or maybe three things. One is a consensuance reached out regarding a broken curb in gutters on, by 18th and Rye. So if someone can look into that, 18th and Rye, he said he has a hard time getting down with his, he is now disabled and is having an issue with navigating that space in that area on 18th and Rye.
I actually live out, used to live out there.
Yep. Second thing is tomorrow's LBCC's graduation, so congrats to our grads. And school is out, is a Friday coming up. So that's all I have.
Happy day for you.
So she'll be gone. I'm out of here. So I had a great week, last two weeks. On the 13th, on the Saturday, a relay for life starts at 10:00 a.m. I'll be walking on behalf of my mom. And one of my clients passed away from cancer last week, on this, last Saturday, Anita Mays, 38-year wife of a Navy veteran, and tremendous woman, and I really enjoyed her company. I enjoyed serving her as her agent, but her loss was, it was tough on me. I really, over the years, I've become friends with her, and so I'll be walking in her honor as well. Second grade class at South Shore Elementary School literally wore me out. I had answered probably 50 questions, and each group, each classroom did a presentation, and I have to hand out some stuff in my office. And the kids were fantastic. One young man dressed up in a suit to meet the mayor, and I thought that was a wonderful thing. And the young people at South Shore Elementary School have been great. Sunrise, all the schools I attend, the kids are really interested in what's going on in the city. And the last thing is I received, and a surprise and an honor, from the Rotary Club, they awarded me a Paul Harris Fellow Award. And I was shocked. Probably the first time anybody's seen me speechless. And so thank you for the Rotary for that honor. And with that, I will then turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a couple of things to address. You know, to Counselor Montague's point, you know, the city is involved in many Pride activities, actually. So, so we are commemorating the, the month and the day. We'll be at Pride with three separate tables. And, and the planning and preparation for Pride has taken almost all departments for, for well over six weeks, six to eight weeks. So we are, and, and by the way, if you go to the library, you'll see many offerings in honor of Pride Month. And I would also just, I can't help but, as a veteran, have to say that the POW flag, I think, is not there for POWs or MIA's. It's for all Americans to remember what happened. So Kohl's, with Kohl's, with respect to Kohl's and trash, it's not true that they can't do anything about it. It's private property. It belongs to Kohl's, and they can certainly do something about it.
Thank you.
We actually voted the community meeting we had with business owners.
Yes.
Did you hear about that?
I am no longer a business owner, so I--
No, no, but we had a meeting here with several business owners.
I didn't know about that.
Yeah, most of the folks came from downtown.
Yeah.
And then with respect to tents, just a couple of words. Obviously, anything that, any changes, first of all, that's a fire marshal's call. And really, we'll have to, if you want to, if the council would like to look at changing the code, we'll obviously have to have the fire marshal comment on that and peel the layers of that onion back a little bit. It, it'll require some evaluation, some consideration. But also, the code does not allow the use of a temporary facility in lieu of proper permitting of a permanent facility. So there's, there's that perspective to consider as well. A while ago, the council, we had talked about collection of transient lodging tax for short-term rentals. We have had multiple responses to a request for quotes for a company to manage that collection of TLT. And today, we finished demos with each of them, and we have a few points of clarification to work through. And we're hoping to have a contract in place by July and then begin outreach and implementation with the intent to go live on January 1st of next year. Fireworks. So we have a, a public affairs campaign that's designed to start, launch on the 22nd of June, which is one day before fireworks go on sale. That's, that's legal fireworks, none of which are mortars and none of which make explosive sounds. They are, what you described as the family things in the driveway. But that campaign will, as in years past, try to educate people with respect to the fire hazards of fireworks and also the annoyance to neighbors. And then the, the last thing I have is, I, I'm very glad that Counselor Kopczynski sent me his sob story, which, if you haven't seen his sob story, I will share with you in the Friday email. It's a, it's a really good story. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Peter. Next on tonight's agenda, we're going to, well, let me see, I'd come back here. It's a long agenda. We're going to recess to executive session to discuss the current litigation or litigation likely to be filed in accordance with ORS 192.660 subsection, paragraph two, sentence H, I believe, and discuss labor negotiations in accordance with ORS 192-dash-dot-660, so paragraph two, subsection D. After that, we'll reconvene. Yeah, let's take a five-minute break, please. Give it time--
I move we approve the requested changes to act me in non-margining classifications within the Public Works Engineering Division.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Well done.
Thank you, counsel.
I will, I will now, oh, I gotta bring out the agenda over here. I'll now adjourn the meeting. Our next meeting will be Monday, June 24th. Um, I'll be 59 that day, or the day, two days before at 4:00 P. M. For a work session.